...the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the Board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire Board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. Tonight, we're also working with new audiovisual materials, so it should be interesting for both the Board members and our petitioners. First, we would like the Board members to introduce themselves.
Richard Kristoff, 4th Ward.
Stuart Dixon, 2nd Ward.
Frankson, 1st Ward.
Jay Kennedy, 4th Ward.
Rosemary Kerr, 2nd Ward. And now, staff, would you please introduce yourselves?
Kathy Cerniak.
Megan Newman.
Our first item of business is approval of the minutes from the January 28, 2013 meeting. Have all Board members had the opportunity to review the minutes?
I have, Madam Chairman. The only question I had, on page six, the bottom where it said Board Member Frankson stated that he can grudgingly support the variance. I'm questioning, I'm not sure grudgingly is a word, but if that's what I said, that's fine. Perhaps reluctantly would be a little bit better moniker, but anyway, not a big deal.
Do we hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of the January 28, 2013 meeting?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is passed. And now, we move on to new petition of the evening. This is consideration of a request for a variance from the setback requirements for accessory structures to allow construction of a new detached garage at 460 Washington Road. Owners and representatives are Stephen and Laura Douglas. First, I would ask if there are any declarations of conflict, conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts?
None.
None?
No.
Would the petitioner please step forward? All those who are going to speak in this petition, it would be great to swear you in all at once.
I'm the only one.
Okay. And your name, please?
Stephen Douglas.
And your address?
460 Washington Road.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
I do.
Thank you. Please present your petition.
Thank you. Only question I have, is there, is there a pointer? Or maybe not. That's fine. I'm Steve Douglas. This is my wife Laura. We live at 460 Washington Road. We've lived in Lake Forest for 25 years. Our home was built in 1930. We bought, actually, it's part of a larger property. I was going to point out with the pointer, it's part of a larger property that eventually became known as Brownsville, where there were eight homes, all built by the same family. They lived in the one in the middle, and they rented out all the ones around it initially as summer rentals, and then later on, they evolved into year-round rentals. We're actually the first owner occupants of our home. As you know, we're in the R3 district, and it is a lot in depth. The garage is not visible from most of the properties surrounding, primarily because of a lot of landscaping and fences, but also, oh, thank you Kathy, also because of other garages in the neighborhood. I think I can make this bigger. A little bigger. Other garage, here's, here's the garage, here's the property we're talking about right in the middle. It's located roughly halfway between Washington Road and Illinois Road. And you see all these garages in the back of the homes on Illinois. They effectively, you know, block the view from, from those homes to our garage, along with extensive landscaping and fences. I think you've got all this in your packet, so hopefully it's a little easier for you to read it there. But we have, in the site plan here, this is the existing house. Being a lot in depth, it violates the 40-foot setbacks which are here in the middle. The garage is over here, roughly four feet from the rear property line and, and the south side property line. And directly in front of the garage, right, running right through here, is a 10-foot utility easement. And there are buried utilities there, actually, the primary electric service for the whole neighborhood, from college all the way to Rosemary. And then secondary electric, as well as cable and telephone, are all buried directly in front of the garage. On the massing diagrams below, the solid line is the existing structure, and the dotted line is the proposed. We're proposing a slightly higher structure to accommodate standard garage doors. The existing garage doors are only six foot five clear. And so, there's about 11-inch difference in height. Here's, here's a shot of the garage a couple of weeks ago, when we still had snow on the roof. This is the north elevation, showing the small existing shed. This is the south elevation. Here's the home facing, I'm standing in the driveway taking that picture. Now, some of the reasons why the garage needs extensive repair. This is a picture of the sill condition on the west wall of the garage. The sill plate should be right here, but it's not there because it rotted away even before we bought the, bought the structure in 92. We've put, you know, temporary bricks and other things under the, here's the stud right here, just so that there is some support between the stud and the foundation wall, which is down here. We also had to put temporary jacks on the interior of the wall to hold the roof up. Here's an example of, the roof is framed with only two-by-fours, and they're spaced roughly four feet six on, on center, which is woefully inadequate. So you can see what happened. That one broke. You can barely see, the one behind also broke, and those have been repaired, again, before we bought, bought the house. Here's the condition at the southwest corner of the, where you see the foundation wall, and there, on this side, the sill is still somewhat intact. So now, I'm going to show you the views, the surrounding area. So the red arrow on the plan shows where I'm standing and which way I'm looking. So first, looking to the east, you can see 464 Washington, which sits in front of us on the same driveway. Then, looking to the south, 410 Washington is another one of the homes built by the same family. It's all the way at the southern end of what was Brownsville. Then, looking to the west, this time, just standing just north of the garage, you can see all the evergreens, you know, shielding view from the neighbors on Illinois. Then, also looking west, but standing south of the garage instead. And here, you can see actually, one garage here, another garage here, there's another one here, which is directly behind ours, which is here. That kind of illustrates how all the garages in the back, you know, shield view from the neighbors. And then finally, looking to the north, primarily, we see the fence between our property and the next one, so I took a picture from a ladder looking over the fence, and there's a garage here in the distance, and the house is over here. The plan of the garage is the same as the existing. It's a three-car garage, and this will sit right on the existing footprint, with the exception of the shed. You saw the picture of the existing shed. We're making a shed that's large enough to use as a, a potting shed, would be the proposal. And a very simple roof plan. Then, in elevation, the east elevation, which faces Washington Road, even though the, the street is about 300 feet away, so the three garage bays and the shed to the right. The north elevation shows the shed here with two casement windows matching the house, and a door going into the garage. The west elevation, which faces a fence and those tall arborvitae we saw in the photo, and the south elevation with one window. In your packet, or I think Megan also passed out one of them, we have letters of approval from the neighbors shaded here. So I basically took the, the one directly behind the garage and went one to the north, one to the south, and then the one directly east of us went one to the north and one to the south. And all, all those neighbors have, are in favor of the petition. The vacant property here is owned by Charles Brown, who lives in London, and I was not successful getting a response from him. And this looks like it's vacant, but the brick house that we saw in the picture to the south sits just off the screen, and that's owned by Alling Brown, who lives in Washington, DC during the winter. And I also tried reaching him, did not get a response. So that's basically it. I know there are four standards that you, that we need to abide by in order to have a variance potentially be approved. I, I think I've shown that, you know, the new structure is going to be a vast improvement over the existing, so I think that means that it won't alter the essential character of, of the property, the surroundings, or the neighborhood. The utility easement that I illustrated on the plan, and, oh, I failed to mention a There's a large tree just here, which, you know, we'll work with the city arborist to protect. And actually, one of the reasons that we're moving the shed further to the west is just to, you know, stay away from that tree as much as possible. You know, we feel like the existing foundation of the existing garage has, has probably, you know, kept the roots from going any farther than that, and we won't, in excavating, we won't go any farther than the existing foundation, so we won't be encroaching on roots at all. So anyway, the utility easement and the large tree present practical difficulties that prevent compliance with the setbacks, and these conditions are unique to this property. That's standard B. Standard C, in the R3 district, the, the setback requirements were established after, well after, the garage was constructed. So the hardships are created by, were not created by current or former owners of the property. And unlike the existing, the repaired structure will comply with city codes, structural codes and other codes, so we won't impair light and air, or cause congestion, or endanger public safety, or impair property values. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, would staff please identify the issues?
Thank you, Chairman. The petitioner gave a pretty thorough presentation this evening, so I'll keep my comments short. The existing garage is, is in a state of disrepair. There is a, a need to do extensive repair, and replacement is proposed this evening. The proposal creates a replacement garage that is more functional for the property owner, and it also takes some effort to protect a mature tree that's in the, the area, given the fact that a deeper foundation is required by today's building codes. My one comment is with respect to the, the recommendation that was in the staff's packet this evening, just a slight change to the wording. At this point, we don't have the exact to-the-inch measurement of the location of the garage. It's approximately four feet from the property line, but we will work with the petitioner to get that information as this project moves forward, if so approved by the Board. So the, a recommended modification, a revised recommendation, is at your place this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions. But generally, the replacement garage will be in the same footprint as the existing garage, no closer than the line of the existing garage, with the slight modification to the height to accommodate the taller garage doors, and of course, pulling the shed back to that west wall. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Does the Board have any questions?
I have a few, if I may.
Please.
I'd like to ask the petitioner, what happens, what's going to happen with the fence in relation to the garage once the existing is torn down?
Well, we propose to build a new fence. The fence is also in disrepair, so we would replace the fence along the same line that it currently sits.
And does it join the garage, or does it run behind the garage? I couldn't quite tell.
It currently joins the garage. We would propose that it would run behind the garage, at least by a few feet.
I'd like to ask staff, is there a, I, I see there's a plan to try and preserve the large pine tree in the yard. What would happen if the tree did not survive?
The city arborist has reviewed the request. He does feel pretty confident that, as proposed, the construction won't negatively impact the tree. Certainly, we are asking for a third-party consultant to look at the tree and, and provide measures to protect the tree before, during, and after construction. If there is a, during that discussion, it is clear that the tree is, will be endangered with this request. Inch-for-inch replacement and a landscape plan that effectively screens that area or provides some replacement plantings in that area would be required.
If I can add to that, I mean, if we find out that the tree would be endangered with, then we will find a different solution. We don't want to lose that tree.
Okay. Thank you. Along the same lines, there's a tree on the south property line, on the south side of the garage as well. It's not in great shape, but has the, arborist or staff addressed that?
The city arborist has visited the site. He has looked at the trees in the surrounding proximity of the proposed garage, and does, does not feel like the garage will negatively impact the surrounding trees.
Okay. And then, architecturally, I assume that the new garage will match the detailing of the existing home?
That's right. Yeah. Unlike the existing garage, the, the new garage will have clabbards with the exact same exposure as the house. The garage doors will be, you know, wooden doors, made to look like carriage doors, and the windows will be casement windows to match the house. The roof, you know, in place of the existing asphalt roof, will be a cedar roof.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
I have nothing else. No, I should.
No questions?
No questions.
I have a few questions for the petitioner. Mr. Douglas, you said when you bought the house in 1992, the garage was already in a state of disrepair?
Yes.
And are you now able to use the garage for its primary function?
Two out of the three bays, the, the doors do function. The, the roof leaks significantly, but the door on the left does not go up and down. You know, so it's, it's somewhat usable. There's currently no power to the garage.
Mm-hmm.
And we've, we had numerous contractors look at the structure, you know, with the idea of just repairing it, but we have not found anyone that came up with a solution. It's just, it was too far gone.
And the new height of the doors would be, how, how much higher than the current doors?
We're proposing eight-foot doors, but then, we're also, it, in the way we're detailing, you know, the head over the door, and the way that the rafters meet, meet that header over the door, you know, we're able to keep the roof down, so it's only 11 inches higher than the existing.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
At this time, I invite any members of the public who would like to testify. Okay, hearing none. This is the opportunity for the Board to cross-examine the petitioner, or we can move to final questions from the Board to petitioner or staff. Any questions?
No.
Well, I have a question. In another jurisdiction, there was a case where an owner allowed a house, over the years, to become quite dilapidated, so that he could circumvent the zoning. He was not successful in the end, but certainly, I see that these owners bought the garage already in dilapidated condition. They're replacing with something very similar. But I did just want to point out that we don't want to encourage anyone to circumvent the zoning by allowing a structure to deteriorate. Any questions?
Or comments?
Or comments?
Bob?
I, I think in this case, it's time for a new garage. I mean, when, when you look at the, the primary home, which is a nice home, and, and the existing garage structure, it's, you know, I mean, the current garage is non-conforming. Anything built in the same place is going to be non-conforming. The, the difference in the height is probably just bringing a garage up to the 21st century standards, and I live not too far from here, so I, I can understand what's going on here, and I'm going to support it wholeheartedly. Nothing not to support, in my opinion. You may feel differently.
I'd like also to acknowledge Steve's presentation. I thought his presentation this evening was very thorough, detailed, especially with all the visuals that he provided. Thank you very much for your effort put forth in presenting tonight, especially with the new technology. Thank you.
And we appreciate your efforts in getting letters of support from surrounding neighbors.
Nothing else I could add to that?
Would a Board member care to make a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'm moved to recommend approval to the City Council of the requested variances to allow the modified replacement garage at 460 Washington Road. There are two versions up here, so I will just say with the conditions outlined in staff's updated memo, if that'll work.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. We move on to the next item of business, which is consideration of a request for a variance from the setback requirements to allow modifications to the roof structure for a portion of the existing two-story residence at 441 East Westminster. Owners are Jim and Maureen Goodwin, and representative is Bob Gabelhoff, the designer.
Hi, good evening. My name is-
All those who are going to speak, I do need to swear you in. Could you each state your names and your address?
Jim Goodwin, 441 East Westminster.
Maureen Goodwin, 441 East Westminster.
Bob Gabelhoff, 3105 Wishewell Lane, Island Lake, Illinois.
And as I see Mrs. Goodwin, I, I must also ask, does anyone have any ex parte conflicts, conflicts of interest? I did briefly meet Mrs. Goodwin and scared her daughter yesterday when I was looking at the site. All right. Do each of you solemnly swear, declare, and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
You.
Okay. Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening. Maureen and I purchased the house at 441 East Westminster in February, and since we've been doing a lot of cosmetic work in discovering some of the, some of the issues that are, are inherent in a 1930s home, one of the things that we immediately wanted to address was an addition that was done in 1966. Apparently, there was a, a permit, but it, it was granted before the historic Board was in existence. So I think in today's standards, it's considered non-conforming. So as new homeowners, we're trying to bring the home back to its, I think its original style, in keeping with the Tudor home and with the surrounding neighborhood. So what we're proposing is changing the, the roof line in this addition to be more of a, a gabled roof. I can show you some, the pictures are in your, in your packet, but tonight, we're requesting the approval of a side yard setback variance on the western side of the property. The, the roof line that we're proposing is actually going to reduce the mass that's in violation today, and we're not proposing any change in the footprint of the, of the addition. You can see it, okay, so to your, to your left is the west, the western property line. And you can see, yeah, Bob just drew, you know, took the pen through the, the setback If there are any questions about our proposal, I'd love to address them.
Are there any comments you can make about the roof line? I know there are some other pictures included in the packet.
Sure. Let me show you. I don't know if you've seen the actual house. If you've been out there, did you see it?
Yes.
The 1960 addition is a aluminum-cladded sided house, or addition, and they want to try to make it more and keep it with the Tudor style. I'm trying to find a picture of the house. This is the current, front of the house, and the, the one side, the driveway side, and then the-
Hit that.
Oh, I'm sorry. The addition, as you can see, is this two-story kind of box just added on with a relatively, almost flat roof on top. And these are just two, two angles. You can't really see much from the west side, because it's fairly close to the property line. It's about four to five feet off the property line. And what they want to do is replace the siding with stucco and change the roof line to a, a gable roof. And let me show you what, is what they want to make it look like. They have an existing gable over on this side. They want to match the same type of gable over here with the same timber beams in the stucco that's on the front of the house, and then a shed dormer that, they have several throughout the house, there's one over on the side here, and just try to match the same material. So what they're doing is trying to incorporate the same roof lines and, and look as the house. The setback is this dotted line right, right through the house. It kind of angles through the existing house. So they're not adding any actual square footage, they're just trying to modify the existing roof, and basically lowering it to this eve line, which would line up with the existing The west side view is this. We're, we're lowering, the dotted line represents the old roof lines beyond, and then this would be the lower eve line, the gable roof, and then we're adding some clear, transom-type windows, but these are current windows that are being removed. And this is the existing brick structure that projects about six inches beyond this wall, so the new, the, the existing wall just kind of butts right up against it. So again, we, maybe it's better to see it in the plan. Here we are. This is the existing house. This was the, the added-on addition back in the 1960s, and now, the 15-foot setback cuts right through the house, and this is the first floor, and the, the second floor is directly above it that we're modifying. Second floor, and the setback line cuts right through, and modifying these, this, these existing rooms with a lower roof line.
And in the packets we received, there's a red area showing the area of reduced encroachment created by the gable, which steps back more than the flat roof does now.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, I would ask staff to please identify the issues.
Thank you, Chairman. The existing structure, as was mentioned by the petitioner, is non-conforming with respect to the side yard setback. The home, at its closest point, is located about 4.5 feet from the property line. Even though there's no change to the footprint proposed, the change in the mass of the roofing does require- does require a zoning setback variance. In this case, given the design of the proposed roof modification, there's actually a decrease in the amount of encroachment at the closest point towards the property line. As was just mentioned, the eve line, the proposed eve line is a couple feet lower than the existing eve line of the flat roof addition that was built in the 60s, and the change from a flat roof area to a gable roof does slope away from the property line, decreasing the amount of mass within the setback area at that, at that point. This project is also located within the historic district. The Historic Preservation Commission did grant a certificate of appropriateness on March 20th, a couple weeks ago. The overall intent of this project is to preserve the historic home and bring some of that character to this rear addition. Let's see, there were a couple letters of, letters submitted to the board in your packets. One letter was in support. There was also a letter with some concern about what would happen to the fence between the property line during construction. I have spoken with the contractor for this project, and he's indicated that the construction equipment will be minimal, just ladders and manpower, but certainly, if there are questions regarding that, I'm sure the petitioner would be willing to respond further to that. The recommendation this evening is to recommend approval to the City Council, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And now, do we have any questions or requests for clarification from the board to the petitioner or staff?
I have a question for clarification from the staff. When you said that the Historical Commission approved the plans, is that what you, or the proposed change?
The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the architectural detailing and modification to the exterior facade of the building, and yes, they did grant a certificate of appropriateness.
So, would it be correct to say that the plans that were submitted as part of the package have already been approved by the Historical Preservation Commission?
The Commission did approve the projects with some minor modification to win the size of one of the windows on the rear elevation.
Okay.
So, generally, yes.
Thank you for that.
I have a question. It's a little confusing, but, so the existing footprint is non-conforming, the new footprint will be essentially the same, correct? Really, all that's changing, and I think the, you outlined it pretty good, well, wherever it is, the roof line and the portion that was highlighted in red, that's really the part that is being altered, and that's the primary reason that we're here tonight for this request?
That's correct. The work within the setback area, yes.
And in, I mean, from a non-architect, we're basically taking this and we're turning it into this. Okay. I get it.
Just along those lines, is, on the south elevation, is, I noticed that what's there now kicks out a little bit from the eastern edge of the south elevation, or the eastern side. Will the new construction be flush all across the south, or will there still be that kick out?
It's all remain in the same plane. We're not changing any walls.
Footprint is exactly the same.
Exactly the same place, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Megan, I had a question, and this is part of an historic district. What are the key features that made this an historic district?
The property is located within the historic district, so the, the home itself was, was built in the 1930s. It is a contributing structure to the district, but the, the reason that the Commission reviewed the request is due to the location within the East Lake Forest Historic District.
Right. And some of the key attributes of the East Lake Forest Historic District? What, what gave it that status?
In 1998, the city adopted the preservation ordinance, which incorporated the historic district that was established on the national level into local ordinance. So, by that action, this property was included in, in the historic district, which contains properties and structures that are unique to Lake Forest, that have history to the, add history to the community, are architecturally significant, designed by significant architects. There's a wide range of structures within the district.
I was just thinking of the recent approval of West Park, and some of the reasons went into that, so I thought it might be useful to hear what they were for that area. Is this residence considered a contributing structure to that designation of historic district?
It is. To do its age and architectural integrity, yes.
Or lack thereof?
Yeah. That's what I was going to say.
Or lack, or, because it wouldn't matter, as long as it's within those boundaries, it's part of the district, right?
Well, some are contributing structures, and others are simply there. When we had the case with the Winter Club, one of the homes they own is considered a contributing structure, but not all homes in that area would be considered that way.
This, this structure, due to its age and the architectural character, is considered a contributing structure. The addition that was done in the, in the 60s was not a contributing addition to that structure. So, this modification is an attempt to bring a more cohesive design to that structure.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members for petitioner or staff?
Well, I have a comment, and I'll be very brief. This is a wonderful, wonderful proposal. Thank you for proposing it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say...
Just one comment. Obviously, it's a big improvement. I would be sensitive, though, to the neighbor, because that fence is awfully close, and when you start throwing ladders and lumber around and everything, you know, you could knock into, but if you put a construction fence along there, something should be okay, I think.
Yeah, I believe the, the owners are willing to repair any, any damage that may occur, but the contractors are going to be very careful.
Yeah, you should be.
Especially as new neighbor is probably a good idea.
Yeah, definitely.
It's all good. I mean, it's a, it's a significant upgrade, so...
Well, then, should we move on to see if a board member would care to make a motion? Excuse me, I am supposed to ask for public comment. Seeing none. Any final questions or staff comments? No? Okay.
Madam Chairman, move to recommend approval to the City Council of the requested variance to allow for the altered roof form at 441 East Westminster to be located no closer than four and a half feet from the west property line, according to staff's memo. Maybe we'll add in there with special consideration to protect the surrounding neighbors from the construction process networks.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is carried.
It was a tie.
It was a tie between Lloyd and I.
It was a tie, actually, Mr.
Yes. Thank you. I'll concede.
All right. Now, at this time, if any members of the public would care for the opportunity to address any issues with the Zoning Board of Appeals on matters not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will ask staff, Megan and Kathy, are there any additional pieces of information you'd like to impart?
Only that, even though this meeting is in April, you still do have a meeting scheduled for the end of April. We will let you know as that agenda is finalized, if that meeting will occur.
Okay.
Great.
Very good. Then, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.